It is seven oh one, we're gonna go ahead and call the Wayne Township Board of Trustees meeting to order for May sixth, twenty twenty five. Can I, uh, welcome, I'm gonna welcome everyone in. If you haven't signed the guest log in the back, please do so before leaving. Appreciate it for our record. Can I get a roll call, please?
Should we roll call, uh, Ms. Colvin?
Here.
Mr. Kaufman?
Here.
And Mr. Jacobs?
Here.
Excellent. Can I have my allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, thank you, Steve, for leading us. Uh, can I have approval of the minutes from the previous meeting for April fifteenth?
I'll make a mention to approve those April fifteenth meetings.
I'll second.
Fellow in favor for the approval of the April fifteenth minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, nays or a like sign, motion is carried.
Okay, do we have any additions, renewals, or disclosures from the agenda?
No.
So we do, we doing any executive session tonight or no?
We're going to. Does that, okay, so there will be executive session at the end of the meeting. Do we have any citizens' comments?
There is here.
Okay, excellent. Thank you very much for attending. Uh, Road Department report. Good evening, Scott.
Good evening, board. Uh, first off, let me offer my apologies for not getting my report in on time. Last week was a little busy towards the end of the week. I was running around like a chicken with my head cut off. But at any rate, I did get it.
I think it's good.
Uh, get it written and we'll go through it. So, uh, Fair Paving was awarded the, uh, resurfacing contract for Warren County. Uh, they're planning to start some base repair up in this area probably for, for the county anyways, uh, namely, uh, Pucksville Road later this month. Uh, and probably moving on into, uh, actually paving and, and we're just doing a scratch course, uh, on, on a couple roads. So, uh, that'd be in the June-July timeframe. Philmore Construction stated at the pre-con meeting, they're looking at a July-August timeframe for our Corwin Avenue project. Ray Hensley for Chip Seal is looking for a late June, uh, July timeframe for, uh, getting our roads, uh, chip sealed. Uh, and we'll see with all the rain, I am planning to start getting rolling this week, uh, with, uh, with all the rain we've had and a little bit of warm weather, the grass has really decided to start growing. Um, I have started some prep work for our road resurfacing program, doing some burn repair and, uh, getting some, uh, spots identified for some wedging. Uh, the trees for the admin building have been delivered and I'm, I'm gonna try to get on those this week as well. So, just been a little busy with, uh, tire collection and getting the scrap haul away, uh, yesterday and today. Bushack, bushwhacking is well underway. We're, we're making some pretty good progress there, but, uh, it's always, uh, an endless task. Recycle Rally was a huge success, uh, even with the less than optimal weather. I have a report, a separate report, um, that, at your pleasure, we got through the road report, or we can leave it to new business, whatever you guys wish. Um, I've been working on, uh, the Road Department budgetary needs for twenty twenty six, uh, which is your one next month, correct?
Yeah.
Or prior to next month?
Till I get everything filed.
Okay, okay. So I've completed the road project portion, which is the biggest expense out of the road, uh, budget. Uh, currently working on the remainder. Um, I'm determined to stay within and under revenue numbers. Um, very cognizant of the fact that I've been spending down some of my cushion quote-unquote funds, and this type of spending is not sustainable. However, doing this was a direct and thought-out plan to utilize the ARCA funds while they were available. And I feel that we did a very good job of that. We got a lot done in a short period of time and didn't put us into financial jeopardy. Uh, tree trimming, as always, remains on the to-do list here and there. I haven't forgotten you, Ms. Colvin. And I don't have anything down. Hundred percent road department equipment is available for use if needed. And that is all I have for the road report.
Go ahead and go.
You want the, okay, so recycle rally. I'm gonna be official with this one. Okay. The twenty twenty five recycle rally was quite the success. While the weather was far less than optimal, everyone dug in and did their level best to keep things moving along. Before we get into the stats, it is proper and correct to acknowledge and thank all those that we were subjected to a cold shower on Saturday. First of all, the two runky drivers, my apologies, I didn't get their names, um, who worked diligently unloading and compacting the material that was brought in. The LCMB shredder truck, this, that was the hot spot on Saturday. Them, them poor folks, they never got a break.
They loved it.
Uh, y'all, yeah, they were, they were, uh, very happy. John Boyd himself was there for Boyd Heating, Heating and Cooling to remove refrigerant from the appliances that had coolant. Big thank you goes out to Kathy Jafrida Taylor for her assistance with getting two of the Lions Club Leos, Ellie Taylor and Ashlyn Callahan, to give their time to the community. At the tire collection site, we had Garrett Lundie and Baxter Harzok from the National Honor Society. These two young men showed up and absolutely worked their tails off. Thank you, fellows. Appreciate that. Even though they didn't really like the gloves that I had provided for them, yeah, they said they saw. Uh, I wanna say thank you to the village of Waynesville and the Dueling Brians. I don't know their last names. I just know both their first names are Brians. Uh, they were instrumental in keeping the scrap station moving along. Uh, Wayne Township was well represented with Road Department members Jeff Patton, Ken Cale Blam, along with fiscal officer Scott Fitzsimmons at the tire station. Thank you very much to those fellows. Special thank you goes out to Mr. Sam Fitzsimmons, who was drug in, maybe not kicking and screaming, but drug in nevertheless, just by proxy of being Scott's son.
He didn't have a driver's license to leave.
He doesn't have a driver's license to leave on his own. He, for all intents and purposes, was volunteered by his dad to work due to his father having to be there. Sam worked extremely hard and without complaint. Thank you. Uh, huge thank you goes to Wayne Local Schools for allowing us to use the middle school parking lot. Uh, Stacy Lowing, Kirk Perky, and myself were at the school keeping things moving along. Stacy, well, looking like a drowned rat and not at all happy about the weather conditions.
I just, like, look at this.
You did look that miserable. If anybody was looking for a hot shower, it was Mrs. Lowing, I can tell you that. Uh, she stood out in the rain and directed residents to where they needed to go after the metal dumpster got full. We didn't know where they needed to go. I'm sorry, that's a period right there. After the metal dumpster got full, Kirk kept everything moving by hauling scrap to the road garage. Thank you for all of that. Lastly, but certainly not least, all three members of the Wayne Township Board of Trustees, Mr. Kaufman, Ms. Colvin, and Mr. Jacobs were at the school helping out here, there, and everywhere, doing whatever needed to be done. Thank you very much. Now for the stats. The moment we've all been waiting for. Uh, twenty-five appliances that had refrigerant was removed and evacuated. A little over five hundred dollars was collected to be donated to the food pantry. Am I correct with that number, Stacy?
Yes.
Thank you. Runky filled one truck completely and started into the second truck. Uh, the LCMB shredder truck stayed busy the entire time. However, they did not fill up. Subsequently, they did not have to turn anyone away, which is a good thing. Uh, fifteen thousand five hundred and twenty pounds, over seven point seven six tons of scrap was collected, bringing in one thousand three hundred and fifty-eight dollars, which I recommend that these funds be put towards the tire collection bill. And I have that check, and I will give it to Mr. Fitzsimmons. I'm out of that. Uh, approximately thirteen to fourteen hundred tires were collected. Three runky packer trucks were filled to capacity. They finished that up this morning. Uh, while a good portion of the folks dropping off tires were happy to make the suggested donations, there were many that did not. However, we did receive one thousand five hundred and thirty-three dollars in donations, and we'll have to wait until we receive the invoice from Runky, uh, to see what, what the additional cost would be. But with the scrap, uh, income and the donation income, that comes to a total of twenty-eight hundred and ninety-one dollars. Um, our community recycle rally, in my opinion, was very, very successful. Looking ahead to twenty twenty-seven, if we choose to stay on the every other year track, uh, wanna investigate making, uh, application to the, for the Recycle Ohio Grant as well as the Mosquito Abatement Grant, both of which we qualify for as a local government entity. Uh, at least that's what the nice lady at the Ohio EPA told me. Additionally, after several inquiry and phone calls, I would also like to see about incorporating, uh, an electronics and a batter, uh, component to the rally, uh, which I'll work on if we all choose to go that direction. Uh, but overall, I believe we all can stand proud in the fact that the three governmental entities of our community have joined together to provide an event slash service that will not only help our residents, but also is an extreme benefit to the environment. That is all. Any questions?
Very good.
Lots, lots of great information. That's great.
I tried to get it all in there.
I think next time we need to do a better job at telling people where their tire recycling is because we had a lot of people, you know, coming through and we had to send them off the way and then tell them.
That's by design.
Really? Why?
Cause I don't wanna advertise the address of the shop.
Really? It is on one, it was on the one flyer though, that Carolyn from the county.
Normally have to ask them to take it off. That happens.
Really?
Okay, we always try and not to put the address off.
That will, that will lead to, yeah. Dumpage over the course of the year.
I see.
So, yeah, that was, that was early on when we, when after the first, we used to do it, uh, up at the school by the bu, uh, bus garage, the old bus garage, and we would put it in box trailers. Uh, then while the new elementary was being built, we had a spot behind where the bus garage is now, and that was a big one that year. I mean, that one was probably out of footprint as big as this building. But then at, once they got their new building, bus garage built and, and all of their, they didn't want the tires up there, so that's when we decided to move it down to the shop. But made a constant decision not to advertise that address. We could just tell the folks that were coming through, uh, give them directions down to there, so we, I don't have to deal with dumpage throughout the year. But luckily, there were no surprises Monday morning when we ran the roads. So, all was well.
Very good.
And that is all I have.
Thank you, Scott.
You're welcome.
You have to let your, um, building know that we appreciate their work and everything.
I will do that.
Okay, moving forward, we have the Fire Department report. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening. Thank you very much. Um, our stats for the, for the month of April, we had sixty-seven EMS runs and forty-seven fire runs for a total of a hundred and fourteen. Uh, our totals for the year are two hundred and ninety-nine EMS calls, a hundred and twenty-eight fire runs, a total of four hundred and twenty-seven. What I, uh, combined runs total, what I did put on the report was our, uh, the past two years for, so for twenty-four and twenty-three. Um, so for April of twenty twenty-four, we had ninety-six total runs, both fire EMS, and, um, to this, to the end of April in twenty twenty-four, we had three hundred and ninety-six total runs through April. And April twenty-three, ninety-one total and, uh, for April. And in twenty twenty-three, a total, total, the, Jason speaks state two, a total of two hundred and fifty-eight for the year. So, that gets a little confusing as I obviously just confused myself. There's the, um, the totals for twenty-four and twenty-three. So, as you can see, we're on a steady increase in, in runs. Uh, I need to make a correction. The Wings or Lions Club is gonna come mulch the station after they got done at the Recycle Fest. However, due to the weather, uh, Kathy Jo and I talked on Friday and we're going, and we, uh, we decided that one, one dose of hard work was enough for them for the day. So, um, kinda up in the air, I'm gonna talk with this, uh, with Stacy and see, um, about having the people there to come mulch here, mulch the station as well. If, if I can't get that worked out, the crews will knock it out over the next couple of weeks or so. Like to thank the Road Department for lending us the tools we didn't use and we still got. Um, and also to Mr. Ken, recently we had a, uh, a power line down on Waynesville Road just south of the shop. Um, it was a live line that was down and in the roadway, and, um, we had to wait for three, three and a half hours for Duke to come out and take care of it. Um, so thank you for that, for helping control traffic.
My pleasure.
We, uh, have a training on our new hose and nozzle set for Saturday the seventeenth. Uh, once that training's completed, they'll go onto the truck and be, um, ready to go. Reminder, and I put this on our Facebook page, today, uh, the county LEPC drill is on May twentieth at the Caesar's Creek Visitor Center from eight to, uh, noon. The roads are gonna be shut down from eight to one right there, right in front of the visitor center and to the spillway parking lots. We've got a, a drill, live, full, full-scale exercise that day. Um, next week I'll be out of town finishing my Fire Officer Three, if bowling rain from the evening of the thirteenth, I'll be back in the afternoon of the fifteenth. That's all I have. Unless you have any questions?
I know. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Okay, moving forth, we have the zoning department report. Good evening, Stacy.
Good evening. So you have my list here of permits for the month. Um, I wanted to make note of the Twin Lakes subdivision. Um, the concept plan was presented at Regional Planning. Um, the next step, this is the subdivision at seventy-three township line. Uh, the next step is a preliminary plan, which will include a zoning review. Um, those plans were dropped off for me today, um, so I'm starting to take a look at their current layout to see if that meets our standards. Um, this subdivision was also renamed. Country Lakes is a Twin Lakes name, has already been used elsewhere in the county, so they're required to change the name. And they're in the midst to also see if they can get a connection to State Route seventy-three. Um, the county has asked him to pursue a variance through, um, ODOT and see if they can get a connection, and if not, then, um, they might have to make some changes to the plan. Let's see what else. Um, the BZA had a hearing on April seventeenth, um, had a split vote two-two, which led to a denial of the variance that was requested for lot size. Um, and also, I, they, um, Chief Beckett alluded to that I have secured a county inmate crew that will be coming in early next week. They're going to mulch weed, edge, um, wash windows, and clean our portico out front. Um, they sent over today a list of tools that they will need in order to do the job for us, but they kind of fit us in when they can. They thought the work here would take them a day or a day and a half to get there. I think about a crew of four or five, um, guys will be coming, so really, um, thought that was really beneficial. We could get a crew to come in and do that for, for no cost in the township, so. Um, hopefully that'll work out well.
Do you need shovels or anything to borrow or?
I, based, yeah, off the list, I, I, well, actually, Jason's got it at the firehouse right now, but, well, I'll get that moved up here. Did, did they email you back, Stacy?
No, he, I talked to him today and he thinks he won't make it till Monday or so.
Okay, so, we'll work on, we'll make sure that they have the tools that they need here, so, no problem.
Yeah, that is all I have.
And questions for Stacy? Are you, are you, thank you, Stacy.
Yeah, thank you.
Moving forth, administration report. Good evening, Gus.
Uh, good evening, board. Uh, Warren Avenue, Scott very much covered all of it. Uh, I have the information there in the report. One thing I have to add to that is that I've sent everything up to Ohio Public Works or to our district coordinator, and we have had others to proceed on it, so they have all their, their information that they need. I am sure, true deal, uh, that took place, if that may first, uh, under Anthem through the Socket Program, which is Southern Ohio Chamber lines. And, uh, all those are participating. Uh, they've been given information and, and if you got any questions, you can get in touch with me or with our agent, Frank Harmon at Ohio Service of Ohio Insurance Services. Recycle Rally, got some information in there. I do want to really, really thank Stacy and Scott for taking us over and organizing it. And, uh, Scott did get a little, uh, we may lose him as a road supervisor. Uh, I think he may be going to Hollywood.
Vaughn, James Vaughn.
Yeah, it was, uh, video, yeah, yeah, I don't know, before it's, uh, maybe it was up close to five thousand views.
That's pretty good.
Really?
Yeah.
You're a sensation.
Holy mackerel.
You're an influencer.
When does the Jack start bouncing in? Can we get some advertising and start getting, yeah, yeah, there you go. I might go to Hollywood.
I said, last, last miracle, we got, I'm glad we did get the, uh, the grant that we, like I said, everybody kind of put their heads together and Scott put the video together with the flyer out and so forth, and, uh, I think quite a few people saw it that made it, you know, Gully's posted it, we posted it, uh, several different places posted the video, and so it, uh,
Wow, I.
It probably made the job a little, little easier and, uh, didn't have as many complaints.
Well, we, with all that being said, we definitely cannot leave out Brad because he met me here early one morning and was my, was the cameraman and the editor, so, any editor issues, it's his fault.
Brad loves Facebook now.
No, I'm glad it worked out.
Okay, uh, moving on to the ZB, uh, Fire Department's been knowing, uh, Wayne Joe Perces Association, they cleaned up the flower beds and mulched, and the park room looks great. They painted the picket fence white. Uh, they've been having some, uh, flower baskets on it. They're gonna place some flowers and so forth, and so, really, really looks sharp, so. Glad everybody's working together on at least keeping that maintained until we get something done with the, uh, with the ground and facilities. Uh, Warren County Hazardous Pedigation Planning Assembly, Chief Beck and I participated in the second of the three meetings for the five-year update of the plan, and the final planning meeting is scheduled for June. And Moms Committee, I put in your packet also, they sent a, stopped in and gave me a letter. They're requesting, uh, a donation if the township wouldn't be so obliged to, uh, help them fund ten thousand dollars worth of trees for tree replacements on Main Street. Uh, actually, I stopped in, uh, again today just to give me an update and everything, and it's coming along real well. They're up over, up over eight thousand dollars at the committee, so, uh, they just said that, you know, I saw like something on Facebook, and so there's some individuals that are donating, some, uh, other companies in the town and so forth, so I think they're gonna reach the goal, uh, pretty easily, but I'm assuming that the board would like, I guess I'm soliciting in behalf of them tonight, that we'd like to make a donation to, to a tree or whatever, which.
How many trees do they want in their place?
You know, I haven't, uh, seen the list. Now that, I know they were going through a process where they were replacing like two or, you know, two a year, uh, that, you know, they're down to where they're, they're picking out more than are replaces every year, so I think they decided to just do them all so that they're all the same size, same, same variety, got the same growth pattern to them, so, uh, I don't know how many tree racks are down there. I would say there's probably twenty or so.
Something you drive by all the time and don't pay attention to.
Yeah, I do drive, definitely now, I really look for them. Most of the trees are up around the bank area and, uh, there's about a block, block and a half, you know, placing, there are trees around. The biggest problem they had is every time they put trees in those, they, you know, after about ten years, they get up into the wires and then they have to be pruned back, and then they don't, you know, they don't look real well, and so it's, I guess it's tough to find a variety that's gonna last very long if you find it down there. Uh, next item, State Issue Two. I wanna thank everybody that went out and voted today, all twenty percent, maybe we had turned out, I don't know. I was at my polling place after you, four o'clock, with like number ninety-seven, so it wasn't a very large turnout, it was, it was. But I hope, uh, they supported the fifth round of voters getting approval in the state of Ohio for the issue of general obligation bonds for ten years. The State Issue Two is what supports and funds the High Public Works Commission, and that's what funds the infrastructure capital improvement projects, such as the one on the avenue we talked about earlier in the meeting. Currently, what's being done in Waynesville on Plankville Road, that's under the, the same obligation bonds to the High Public Works Commission. So I'd say our community has seen a, you know, a great value in this. Uh, you know, this will be the fifth round and, uh, yeah, yeah, it's, really tells me my age, cause I can remember when I first became a trustee and I was up in Columbus and their first, first time Issue Two was on the ballot, I was totally against it, cause I thought it was ridiculous for the state to sell bonds and borrow money for a ten-year period of time, uh, you know, to work on the infrastructure. And, you know, at that point in time, they were advertising, by the way, it was written, it's textually, uh, town's it's going, going to receive ten percent of the money, and so most of it was one of those cities, and so naturally I was in opposition against it at that time. But I'm very supportive of it now, when I've seen that what it's done, you know, not only for cities, but we've got our fair share in Wayne Township. Uh, the villages have had their fair shares, and it's really supported us locally and supported the county, so, uh, I hope it passes tonight. Uh, ODOT, uh, got word that, uh, approval for the project I gotta do by here, which is, uh, the statement or scheduled to be released at the end of July and due back, I think you said before. Uh, project scheduled for construction in two thousand twenty-six, and this is the one that involves resurfacing of State Route seventy-three and adding a turn lane at seventy-three and code seventy-three. So that should be done in twenty-six. So we'll get the traffic light, which is supposed to start construction on that this month. And then we'll get the turn lane next year. We have Avenue done, the bridge has been done, so.
Lots, lots of big things.
Too many good ones, you know, you hurt, kill at our intersections like that, so.
Yeah. Uh, back a little bit, kind of cuts on Stacy's topic about the subdivision, uh, and that's probably part of what ODOT's looking at, uh, with this issue that we have on our west side of State Route seventy-three. It's actually East State Route seventy-three, but anytime you have a subdivision more than fifty homes, which this one they're proposing, it's gonna have fifty-one or two homes in it. Typically, with their traffic surveys or whatever, they will possibly require, or may require, a deceleration lane and also a turn lane. You know, may turn that portion of State Route seventy-three into a super two, kind of like what they're gonna be doing at this intersection, which the super two is, but they know two or three lanes with a center turn lane. So, we, we shall see. Uh, other than that, I think that's all I have for it. If you must have any questions.
Very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving forth. Moving forth, fiscal officer report, good evening Scott.
Hey, good evening everyone, so Scott gave the, uh, the number that we had from the food, uh, well, from the rally for the food pantry. And it was five hundred and seventy-six dollars, uh, so the account now has been brought up to one thousand sixty-five dollars and twenty-seven cents, um, for the food pantry. However, we've only appropriated two hundred dollars, but if they want that a little bit, we'd have to do some reappropriation. And then, uh, so I've been contacted by the state and, uh, and I think they should probably already talk with you or send you an email. Uh, so we're, we're moving into that audit phase, uh, for, for the township. So we're really in the really early beginning stages of discussions and this and that and preparing for the audit. So I'll be, one of the things on my check off list is to get them access to SEVs, they can just pull the documents through that, in fact, they were, again, this is like probably the second or third time that I've talked to them and they, they were, that was the first thing they asked nicely, or documents were digital, they were like, SEVU is the app, or they were like, good, okay, good. So they were very happy that we're using SEVU, I guess is my point, so we'll give them access, um, uh, but I told her, it's, they're still not quite where I would want to be in terms of order and structure, but, uh, we'll make it all more obviously. But, so I am beginning to filter, uh, vouchers, uh, and remember that it's going to be a, uh, to you guys, so I'm right now, I'm doing both, the hard copy and, and electronic, and it goes to, um, Andy, then Diane, then, um, Brad, uh, we can change it, but that's just how it was initially set up. Uh, so they're gonna, so you should start seeing the filter now, uh, now, he, uh, Andy just cleared a bunch of them, so you should have them, you should have some in there now to look at your queue. It should send you an email if there's, if there is something in your queue, uh, but I, I know there is.
I know originally.
There's some stuff in your queue now, I know that.
It sent, it sent me an, uh, an email, it said eleven different spots, so I clicked on eleven, I logged in, and then they popped up and
So, yeah, let us know if you've got issues and we can work it out, like we're asking stuff for, for Gus. So, I would like, uh, you know, so we got this month kind of played with, and I would like, uh, maybe June first to kind of like make that hard cut over, or everything electronic versus me going back and forth, back and forth, right, that's what we're, we're at. Uh, but yeah, some of it still will be, you know, uh, be a for wet signature, you know, obviously checks, it's still going to be wet signatures, those kinds of things, uh, but predominantly a lot of these other invoices, uh, you know, you'll be able to just approve and, and move forward, or you, that's how some of those, uh, POs, I guess I should back up a little bit for, for Brad. So we've structured, restructured it now for the, the POs, because really by state law, the only official signature that has to be on, on POs, the fiscal officers. Uh, so what we've done is restructured it to policy that, um, the spending, or the expenditure limit that the, uh, the department heads have, is that two, uh, two thousand, if they get something for, you know, widgets, a thousand dollars worth of widgets, you know, they'll let me know, I'll get the PO and they'll sign off on it, and that's where it just stops, because they've, they've, when that, you guys have given them that spending authority, now you guys will have to approve, they don't pay much, but they have the approval to go ahead and spend on your behalf. And then Gus is at four thousand dollars, so when, if it's something that goes up to four thousand and he signs off on it, anything over that, then it goes to you guys, they have to sign off on before, uh, we can actually, you know, execute PO and any contracts or anything that go with that, or, uh, with that PO. So those are the, really the two main flows you're going to see, either it's a payment vouchers or, or POs, uh, sign off on. Uh, so I, also a process, a little bit of a process, uh, I can pull up a report that shows that every, every, uh, check that we've written, um, in a month or whatever the period of time. And I was thinking when we do approval of, uh, of the bills, because we may or may not have hard copies of bills now to approve. You're approving them electronically, but, uh, I was, I was thinking about just creating that document, uh, so you guys can review it on hand and then we can approve it and put it as notes and then it's, you know, that way, uh, you're kind of, you're getting both of it, so you're sending electronically and then you can re-review it, uh, I think that would be a good, um, case study there for
Let me ask, so there's no way to make it so that it blows out to all three of us at one time instead of
No, they, they are working on that.
Okay.
But right now it's hierarchical.
Unlike one of us is going to be on vacation at some point and then it's going to like
Well, we can, but I can, I, Gus and I have overview of the whole system.
Yeah, okay.
So, uh, if you're the, if you're the choke point, because you're on vacation, we can go in and just move it forward.
So you can maybe push it forward then, right, and we can, you've got two.
Yeah, 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 we can do that, and in a later day, you honestly could go back and approve it later, maybe. But where the, the choke point would be is, you know, you were gone for a week, you know, yeah. Uh, because we could, I can take this whole, that group in and put it back through the workflow for you to sign off, um, if you needed to. But two, uh, obviously is where we're at, if we need to. So, um, so that was, that was SEVU, I did get the, our bill, I didn't get it, uh, set up for, for payment yet, but for all that scanning, it was about seventy-nine hundred dollars, we had a lot of ten thousand that became all under budget on that, uh, for that piece of it. Um, there is a feature that didn't initially come with it, I have it turned on as a test trial right now, which is the, the OCR, um, I guess, search feature, so I can, if you go in there and let's say you go to the payment vouchers, I put in, Scott puts in, it will pull up, uh, every, everything in there that would have Scott, it's in the, or, or media minutes or whatever. It just makes it easier to scan for it, however, it's an additional, uh, five hundred dollars a year, uh, for that feature we turned on. So if we're forty-nine hundred for the whole thing, right now, that would be an additional five hundred. Uh, I would suggest, uh, we haven't got billed yet, but I would need your guys' approval to, okay, at least at minimum, this first year haven't turned on because they're the ones that scan all the documents, and they're not, they don't, not all of them are as logical as you would think they would be, they're, you know, so it's going to be some hunting and pecking through, for some of these documents that I had to pull. So, uh, at least for a minimum of one year, I would ask approval to, uh, to do that OCR feature on it, uh, and then you guys can do whatever.
So if you find a document that, that is not hidden or where you would find that, can you reclassify that document?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, some, I've, I've started that slip process, but I think it's, two, four hundred documents that we've uploaded somewhere in there. Um, so that would be a really slow, so some of it's not going to be worthwhile probably, right, I mean, uh, even receipts that are back four, five, six years ago, that's probably not even worth messing with. Stuff that's obviously in our current audit years and, uh, the previous audit year will probably make sense to have, uh, the ability to, to get a hold of a lot easier payroll records and stuff like that, I'm going to have to kind of rejigger a little bit, uh, so it's a bit more of a, uh, common sense fashion, because, so as an example, they have, they get a miscellaneous, so they're like big buckets, right, and so one of them is called miscellaneous files, which I hate that name, but I haven't changed it, I just have the title for better hangout. So within that are a bunch of little buckets, right, well, they got one bucket for taxes. Well, I got looking in the round and they had nothing to do with taxes, everything was about, they were audits, they were state audits, documents. So now you're, you know, I have to rename all of that, you know, and that's what I'm saying, is, it just things are a little long, um.
I guess I thought we were getting that OCR searchable thing.
Well, I, I did too, but I didn't realize that, yeah, it's actually an additional cost.
Yeah.
So, uh, it's not as bad, uh, because, you know, you do a lot of, a lot of inputting at the front end, which isn't terribly bad. Uh, but the big pickup right here is how they file, you know, that's where it's a little bit of a headache. Not knowing exactly where everything is, uh, because of that. So, that's what I would, uh, would ask, seek, uh, approval for, for, at least for this, uh, first year to have that feature turned on and then we can make decisions later.
Is there any way we could ask them to wait a turn year till we get everything straightened out?
We could always ask, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I think.
They've worked with us pretty well so far.
Yeah, since they are the ones that scan and then they're, and you're finding problems, then, you know, say, use that as a
I would, I would I would go with it. Some kind of gray sphere, we'd like to use that.
Yeah.
It would be nice to have a gray sphere to be able to organize.
Right.
I'll bring, I'll get ahold of Liz about that.
Doesn't hurt.
Well, exactly.
Answers always know if you don't ask a question.
There you go. Uh, other than that, I don't, that guy has anything else.
Okay. Thank you, appreciate it, Scott. Moving forth, old business, sale properties, any real business? Sam, any updates?
All right, we did our fact finding, um, I have, we talked with, uh, Karma, VFIS and Parlin Township, and we also looked into the Voice Cast of America supporting program, um, I have a recommendation for you guys the next week.
Wonderful, deserved it.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. New business, any questions or concerns with bills?
I have none.
Any questions to approve payment that bills present?
I'll make a motion to approve the bills as presented, paid presented.
I will second that.
Thank you.
Okay, real call vote, Liz Colvin?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
And Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
All right.
Saying no legislation, any other new business?
Uh, I do have something, uh, I'll just go pull up here, see. Pull what's up, my dearest. A PNC has sent out a copy of, uh, candidates for District Pen and Integrating Committee, and we have to have this turned in before our next meeting, so I will fill it out. Uh, you can vote up to three, I do not recognize any of these names on here, so I'll just kind of ask an award at, uh, nobody from Warren County, so, you know, we have a, uh, from Chester Township, they have one, uh, if you're familiar with any, any that you would like me to include on the voting, uh, please like to put one in there, because they need to pay at least fifty percent of all jurisdictions to turn in the appointments.
Get one from each county.
No, that's not how you do this.
Those got good representation then, you think of it that way, like I like the Clinton County one, I mean, that's going to be the closest one to
It might be the closest one to, I'd agree with that.
I agree with that, and then you give a little bit of variety, I definitely wouldn't go all Velder County.
And, and you don't, we don't have to select.
You don't have to select three, right?
Yeah.
I was, and then just pick
Just pick Clinton.
Yeah.
Very good.
Just like we were for trustees.
Next item, I guess, on the new bills, was part correspondence, but, uh, due to the fact that I guess we were still using PO Box eighty-nine, uh, the State Department of Commerce did mail out on March twelfth this letter that we just got this week or today, actually, I think. And it's asking for the liquor control renewal of licenses come June first, and it's just that standard letter that we have, the board has any, anybody with a liquor license that we've had issues with or trouble with, and we would have to submit a resolution, uh, certifying what issues and troubles we had to them by May second, which is already passed, so just kind of a FYI, which we don't have any actually in our township, in our township, but they're in the villages, so, uh, yeah, the one we used to have, which that license is probably, maybe still tied to the Hoppin Hill softball course, that was on, was in the township. But I'm assuming nobody has any issues or seen any issues, so, no, just FYI, we'll discuss it. And new business, that's all I have.
Okay. Any correspondence? Correspondence?
Correspondence, just a press release that came out, uh, today, that I will probably forward on to you, Brad, maybe to put on the, uh, Facebook site, and that's, uh, ready for the road closure for the twentieth from eight to one P M for, uh,
I'll send her one.
And, let's see, other correspondence. We're getting all kinds of, uh, this is open all the time for managed care for women's comp, so we've got, I met a man that was asking, uh, we've had several claims in the last few years and worked really well, and so I would just, you know, if we do nothing, we will just automatically stay with them. So that's kind of my recommendation to the people there. And the only other correspondence that we got the email today was the fact that the county did, uh, accept an award contract for the Volca's Rock Salt to Carbill. And it's ninety-six dollars and twenty-five cents.
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-five?
Ninety-six, twenty-nine.
Ninety-six, twenty-five?
Twenty-five, twenty.
Yeah.
It's too much, too much.
So it's a little higher, it's what, uh, we were ninety-two, I think, so it's a little more, more, more higher, but, uh, on the paper they sent out, the email, they didn't say twenty-five, so.
I think the high, I might be getting the high bid mixed up, I think it was one twenty-nine for the pilot, or for, uh, yeah.
Yeah, it was a hundred twenty-nine for the pilot.
That's where I'm getting the twenty-nine.
It's ninety-six, twenty-five to be dumped, and so, we're in for two hundred, so I guess you need to go ahead and put a requisition in for
Yes.
Two hundred, however you do it, because they can't deliver exactly two hundred tons, Mr. Fitzsimmons.
Right.
So we have to fudge out this, uh,
I'll work it out.
Ten, they come a little bit under, but I mean, yeah, it may end up a little bit over, so your requisitions, uh, to your purchase owner, make sure it's high enough, they'll cover.
I'll, I'll, I'll work it out.
Shoot high, pay low.
That's right.
Any elected officials come in?
I'll read, we'll go first.
Okay, I just want to thank Perky Landscaping for the trees, they look really nice and they're bigger than I expected, they look great, so.
Basically same thing, thank you for the, everybody that volunteered and participated in the recycle rally, it's a great event.
My work comes, it's coming.
Yeah, very good. The only thing else I'd like to say too is that, um, June third meeting, I'll be on vacation, so just to give you guys an heads up.
And I will be right back from vacation, that's why I was talking about the whole SEVU thing, because it's going to be like,
Yeah.
It's going to, we're going to call it up, probably.
We'll go with you then. Okay, be good.
Um, so, going to executive session, oh, so, make a motion to go to executive session for purchase or sale of public property, ORC one twenty-one. Due to G two, since premature disclosure of this information, we give an advantage to certain individuals, it is essential that the discussion of this activity be handled privately by trustees. Final vote on decision must be made at public meeting, trustees are also prohibited to give information concerning potential buyers and sellers, where such has occurred, the purchase or sale of public property is void. I have a motion to go to executive session.
I'll make a motion to go to executive session.
I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Board of trustees and Mr. Jacobs.
Sorry, my vacation is next for the next week, so.
Oh.
Okay, uh, we came out of executive session at eight forty-three, motion was made by Diane, seconded by myself. All in favor, so we are in regular session, it is eight forty-four. What other news do we have, any other discussion?
No.
I have none.
Okay, so it is, uh, eight forty-four and, uh, I will make a motion to adjourn, if I have a second.
I will second that.
Andy's going to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much for watching.
Thank you.